That's the one, okay.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, you have heard. Mr. Claburn's request there, you have the agenda in front of you.
I think I also heard something else. What are you saying?
Item five, still on the.
We're waiting for appraisal for.
Yes, item five was tabled pending an appraisal.
Who was supposed to provide that appraisal?
Uh, the, uh, the, uh, CEB director and, uh, Charles.
Do we have it? Okay, so we're talking about removing item five as well?
Yes.
Discretion. So I'm interested in entertaining a motion on the agenda if we could have one.
I move to approve the agenda, removing item five and item nine C.
I'm sorry.
Question.
Any questions?
And those questions?
Why are we moving nine C?
There you go.
Please.
Evening, residents, council again. Uh, we were, we were asked to remove it because they wanted to make some revisions to the MOU from the workshop to make things a little bit clearer. Yep.
Okay, so we have, uh, the motion is on the floor made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by Councilman Ashafi. Questions have been answered, additional questions, concerns, dissent? Madam clerk, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica for the approval of the agenda. Uh, with the removal of item five and item nine C, supported by Councilman Ashafi, would you please take the roll on that item?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes, to approve with amendments.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Jim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. Agenda has been approved. Moving on to item four, this is the approval of the regular minutes for the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, city council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes for regular meetings, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Chair offers a second. Questions, concerns? Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Jim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. This is a portion of every city council meeting where we turn the floor over to Mayor McDonald and allow her an opportunity to address the citizens during the city council meeting. Mayor McDonald? The floor is yours.
I'm here, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, first of all, I want to thank everybody who showed up for the, uh, block club, the, uh, North Point Block Club cleanup that happened on Saturday. It was beautiful, they gave our flowers to our residents to plant in their yard or around to beautify. As we know, North Point has been, uh, one of the places that really has needed help, and I'm glad that they've come together and, uh, working together to get their area beautified. So thank you, I know some of them are in the audience, and I appreciate that. Um, also, I just want to read something real quick. Because it has come to my attention that there's people interfering with government, and there's a law. And the law talks about interference of, of, of government and, uh, responsibility of who lies where. So I'm not going to take long, but I definitely want to read this so people will know. Legal process, oh, mishepail law, seven fifty plus dot four seven eight A, legal process, intimidation, hindering, or obstruction of public office or employees. A person shall not attempt to intimidate, hinder, or obstruct a public office or public employees or a peace officer in the discharge of his or her official duties by use of unauthorized process. So there's a fine for that, there's two years imprisonment and a fine for up to a thousand dollars. We have people that is consistently trying to intervene or interfere in the process of government. And we have people who are out here just writing whatever, don't have, don't, don't, they're not a part of the, uh, city of government, and passing it to people to bring in, to have it looked at, approved. This, this is, these are, these are things that is illegal. And so at this moment, I've decided that I'm going to reach out to the Attorney General's office and put into place, I see if they would look into interference with the government. Also, our charter talks about people interfering with the administration and, uh, employees. Um. The hiring and firing of, of, of employees comes from the mayor. Salaries are set by the mayor. And so when someone tells me that they want to cut someone's salary, or they better go and get some new this or somebody else, and don't understand that these people are out here putting their lives on the line. I have a problem with that. Because if you continue these things, we're going to lose the people that we have. We're down to however many police officers, we're down to minimum staff. Eleanor works for the job of three people. Just so we could stay afloat, and I will not have anyone interfering with someone who has a master's degree in finance. Who is qualified beyond qualified. She can go to any other city and make almost six figures. But she stays here because she loves Highland Park. And when I see people talking about she got to go, or this, that, and the other, oh, we have a problem, because I do the hiring and firing. And so I'm not pulling my weight here, but that's what the charter says. And enough is enough. We have to stop allowing people to come to our city, or come in our city, or sit in our city and try to destroy it. We have people suing us. When I see that lawyers are being told that, uh, that things is being taken away from lawyers who have to be in frivolous lawsuits over and over and over again. We have a person who sues us consistently, and we have a new lawsuit coming, and not only did he, is he suing us, but he's working with someone who is supposed to be working towards being in the city to sue us. So when we continuously have to pay these prices and pay for these things, we paid out eight hundred thousand dollars last year. For frivolous lawsuits, for lawsuits that we have to settle, and it is starting to get really ridiculous, we had got these lawsuits down. So now here comes some more. And people are supporting this. People who's supposed to be on the side of the city is supporting frivolous lawsuits. So yes, I'm upset today, I'm telling you, this is going to stop, I will be reaching out with a letter to the Attorney General's office for them to investigate these people that are involved in collusion with people who do not work for the city. And so that, that's all I got to date, uh, Council President, oh, as far as the budget, yes, I do, amended budget. The amended budget is twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. That has, time has passed. The state is saying that we must have a budget. A budget that is amended and balanced. And now we're into twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. So already that budget is done, but we have to amend it to balance the, the book. So I hope that you guys understand the ramifications of what will happen. If we don't, I, I hope that you would do it. And get it done so we can move on, but if you choose not to, the Attorney General will be stepping in. Have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, folks. Citizens' participation on items on the agenda, item five, the original item five has been stricken, new item five is finance. Under that is the mayor's resolution to approve agreement between Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network and the City of Highland Park. The new item seven is with the city clerk, resolution to approve the establishment of polling places and the rate of pay for elected election workers for August sixth. Next, we have community economic development, which is the new item eight, it's a resolution to submit, submit an application for, uh, mishda, resolution to approve the addendum to extend the contract with the title, uh, clerk LLC Auction Services. Um, the new item C for item eight is a resolution to approve the option to purchase and sale of commercial lots at sixteen oh two five, sixteen oh three nine, sixteen oh five one Hamilton to Aphrodisiac. So that is what is on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak to agenda items, please join us here at the podium, I'll set aside two minutes for you, and you can address the agenda items. Otherwise, we'll move into the general session.
Good evening, council residents, my name is Renee Ford, I live on, uh, West Buena Vista. My question is the resolution to submit application for mishda, what is that, Grant? And before you make that resolution, will the citizens be able to know what it's all about? It's under community development.
Yes, ma'am, at that, at that point, I'll, I'll try to read it out for you, I'll read it out to expand it.
Okay, also, um, we've been going over this issue for quite a while now, it's the budget. I don't know what to say, if the budget's not approved, that means we have no ambulance service, no, please, I know by state they have to continue to work, but my concern is the ambulance service, the garbage pickup. Uh, council not approving it, are you willing to come out and pick up my trash every Friday? Are you willing to stay by my house if my mother needs to, uh, to get an ambulance or any resident in the city of Highland Park? So I need the council, whomever it may be, that's disagreeing, think about it, you live here in Highland Park, I'm a homeowner, I don't know if you own your homes, that's not my business, but please consider approving this budget, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizens like to be heard?
Hi, Lisa Stalorski here, um, for the benefit of Ms. Ford, council did pass, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget last, um, June the seventeenth, and what is, uh, I believe in question tonight is whether or not council is going to approve a revision to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget because, uh, the administration spent one point eight million dollars over, uh, the, the amount that they were supposed to, that was approved by city council. And instead of getting the approval of city council before spending the money, they asked for approval after having spent the money. Um, and so that is what is at issue, um, just to, to be very clear.
Good evening, my name's Alexis Ramsey, I'm a resident of the city. Um, I think we're getting misinformation here. We have a twenty-three, twenty-four budget that's asking to be amended. I don't know any other city in the land who doesn't approve amendments. It will happen, you all have asked to put provisions in place moving forward, but we are under a ACO, we are under an ACA agreement, these people out here can get the levy, still put on their home because we're still in court. That's eighteen thousand dollars nobody has to pay additional in taxes. So I get it, it's been over budgeted, but this happens, this happens in Detroit, this happens in Hazel Park, this happens in Warren. But if you all sit here out of personal vendetta and decide to not approve this budget, you're not just hurting yourselves, you're hurting every one of these people that you're looking at, every one of these people who with their faith in you to put you here in this seat to represent us. It's eighteen thousand dollars we talking about. Now, I don't know what kind of deep pockets you have, but I'm talking about the residents, I don't know anybody's money, what they have, but what I am asking you tonight is that you put provisions in place to come and have quarterly updates, but I'm asking you tonight to have some grace, maybe some mercy, I don't know, but you all need to have something because I don't understand one point two, one point eight, I'm not sure exactly what the amendments are, but they're very minute compared to what can happen to us if it's not passed, thank you.
Good evening, um, Ms. Ramsey, I clearly understand what you're saying about the budget. Yeah, um, and, and I've been to many council meetings, and it had never been said, what could happen and this and that, you get this at the last minute of what could happen, if this don't happen or that don't happen, this could have been explained, so you put people in a crunch to say, I'll take this, we asked for line, I heard them ask for line items. What is so hard about giving them, giving council, giving the people, giving us line items of how the money is being spent? Ms. Eleanor was so great, according to Ms. Mayor, I, what about that? Why can't we get the line items? I understand all of the what could happen, we not gonna die, we still gonna live, but it's time to fight sometime for some shit.
Any more citizens?
Uh, my name's Gracie Wooton, uh, on Eastern Street. I just wanted to, uh, say that I know even for a home budget, that sometimes you have to make adjustments. Now, it was, you know, it's my understanding that the council, as well as the mayor, could have updates on the budget, you know, uh, monthly. So that means that the problem that we're having is, uh, it's on the, it's on both administration and the council, that more view wasn't put over the, uh, budget in a timely way. So, um, at the end of the year, it's been my understanding that the mayor could ask for, uh, money to balance a budget, because we know that we cannot have a budget, uh, that has not been amended. So what I'm, uh, asking is that, uh, the amendments be made, that need to be made for, uh, the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Grace, here's your two minutes. Now, let me just make sure I point out to the audience, every month for over a year, the finance department gave us the monthly financial statement, and every month, Ms. Martin, Ms. Alshafi, and Ms. Robinson refused to accept it, every single month, so we're talking about, we're having a conversation about, so I just want you guys to remember, every single month, for eighteen months, Ms. Martin, Ms. Alshafi, and Ms. Robinson voted not to take the monthly statement, where these expenditures were explained. Every single month for eighteen months, I have my copies at home. We're getting on with the meeting. Any additional citizens want to come up to the podium?
Council President, I'd like to speak, I'd like to speak.
Ma'am, no, ma'am, I, I, I see your, I see your hand, Ms. McDonald, you're the last person, you're the last person, I see your hand.
Uh, excuse me, I don't think it would be fair for just me to be the last person.
No, 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 I'm talking about, there, there's people online.
Oh, online?
The ones that are online, yes.
I hear you, okay, because I was going to say now.
No, Ms. Sutherland, go ahead.
All right, okay, anyway, the point that I'm trying to make is this, the people on the council have to understand that you are our representatives, we voted for you, and not to look out for our best interest is really kicking us in the behind, and I don't like that. I'm paying my property taxes here in Highland Park to pay for your salaries. There's certain services that we deserve because of the fact that we pay our taxes because of the fact that you need to be supported by us, without the money from us, then you're totally volunteering your time, is that not correct? I'm not a voluntary person, I have a master's degree, I taught school for forty years, and I know very definitely when we're being abused, and you're abusing us, and I refuse to allow that to happen to me. And you, my dear, don't say, can we get along with me, and don't sit there and look all blasé and complacent, this is you too, I voted for you, so I expect you to represent me in a matter where you want to be, well, you look like you're interested, and the people that you're representing, you don't get all blasé, you know, ah. Okay? Okay? Oh, you can't give me an answer?
Not allowed to speak.
Well, then say that. Well, not then, uh, give me an answer, or I.
Hey, can I interrupt you, Ms. Sutherland?
Okay, no problem, I see, I have a problem here, okay, my dear, uh, we'll discuss it later, in person, face to face, no problem.
Shit, just for the record, two of us voted to amend this, the two of, we voted to amend it, and we voted for the budget, so save your tomatoes and your rocks for the right people, okay? My councilwoman voted to amend the budget, and so did I, Ms. uh, Ms. Mia, would you come on up?
Hi, I'm Gwendolyn Mia, I'm here representing my mother, bringing Mia, who's sitting back here, uh, Riston. Um, I want to also just have a concern in that I, I watched the TV this morning, and Dearborn Heights met last night, until they resolved whatever concerns they had. And I want to know if it can be answered, was that even an attempt that we would try to sit together, or that you all would try to sit down together to get these answers to move forward? Because that is what, if you are truly trying to move forward and really represent the constituents that you have, um, asked to vote for you, um, what had been done in regards to that? We had until last night, eleven fifty-nine, twelve midnight, right, to get this done? Another city was in the same situation, I raised that question online, and then I, I had to correct myself, I, I shouldn't have raised it online, that's why I showed up today, because my mother can't speak for herself, so I'm here in representation for her, we've been on, in Highland Park for fifty-five years. Paid taxes and everything, and we just need people who are committed to the city and not to themselves, because the city, you know, we, we're in a very, very crucial space, time, and if things go the other direction, many people won't be able to keep their homes if a tax levy or anything like that comes about. I thank you for responding, uh, to Mr. Bates, to try to give me some clarification about what was being voted on, I do appreciate that part of it, but as I began to look at more stuff, I then began to ask myself, you know, why are we waiting until July first to talk about this when it should have been discussed before the deadline? Thank you for your time.
We tried, Ms. Mia, we did, we tried, four, four or five times the budget was brought to us. I, come on, I, come on, our people are waiting online too, so, once we get done in the gallery, I need to move online, go right ahead, sir. Good evening, council, I mean, this is a scary situation that we're facing, but it brings me to think that this is why we need a city manager. We no longer need to govern this way, a city manager is what we need, and the way things are going now, you make that argument even more prudent, that we should have a city manager, that's all I had to say, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we have people online, I'm going to start with, uh, Yolanda online, let me allow you to talk, Yolanda, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Can you say hello? Uh, Yolanda? Okay, Yolanda, I extended permission to talk to you, can you, can you say something? Okay, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna go on to, uh, Pastor Floyd.
That's probably me, you say Pastor Floyd, it's probably Charlene Turner Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, my picture shows up as my pastor's picture for some reason, but anyway, I wanted to thank, uh, Council President and Councilwoman Manica for voting to amend the budget, and I want to say that the money has already been spent. At this point, amending the budget for the council people who did not vote to amend the budget is a mere accounting procedure that's done all the time in organizations. I run organizations for forty years, and amending the budget is just standard accounting procedure. It's not going to change anything except that we will be in compliance with the state's requirements, we cannot go back and undo what has already been done, we must move forward, amend the budget, and then as you move forward, continue to have regular meetings with the accounting staff so that you understand the budget, but this request is a regular accounting procedure that's done all the time in organizations and in city, and, and not only city, but state government.
Yeah, business period budget.
Okay, Ms. Turner, thank you very much, I'm gonna go ahead and mute you, uh, Ms. Yolanda, I'm gonna unmute you now.
Good, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can, thank you.
All right, thank you, I'm, I'm, I just want to talk about the selling of the commercial property, um, up on Hamilton, I'm hoping that we have a development plan and that we're not just selling them, um, without understanding what they want to do in the community, um, I know that that's a part of, of Hamilton that is not really developed, but in looking at our plan for the city is what they're proposing to do, and I don't know the organization, I'm gonna go look them up and figure it out, but what they're proposing to do, is it going to be a benefit for the city of Highland Park? So that's just one of the things I would ask my council to look at, um, when we're looking at, again, commercial property sales.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am, go ahead and mute you again, now I'm gonna move over, I have one more citizen that would like to speak. And ma'am, the floor is yours, this is, uh, the mayor as a citizen.
Yes, um, as far as amending the budget, this is a practice that you hear me? Because I'm getting re, rebirthed, uh, this is a practice that has happened in every commi, um, municipality, every, uh, state where budget amendments, matter of fact, the state had to amend their budget, uh, a few times last year, or bring budgets amendments to it, as far as the, uh, one point eight million dollars, Ms. Stalarsky so eloquently said, eight hundred thousand of that were lawsuits. And then the rest was things that if you pull your packages, go back to your packages, were things that the city council approved. Approved paying out lawsuits, settlements, these things have to be paid. So when you saying that we are, we misuse money or overuse money, these are things that had came up that had to be paid based on the fact that these, these incident, incidents happened. Overtime, as far as the police department, until we get enough police officers, there will be overtime, or you, you won't have anyone policing, policing your city. Because if I have to cut people at eight hours or whatever, and there's nobody to replace them, the city won't have anybody until we get people, we are actively, actively trying to recruit, but please know while we're doing that, other cities are doing that too. So I would just want everybody to understand, a lot of these, this overtime, over stuff that, uh, overtime, and as well as the amendments, happened because we had to pay out lawsuits, we had to move money from situations where water was already used, used, or things had already been used, and you agreed to, and, and voted for those things to be paid. So please recheck your, uh, all of your packages. And make sure that you know what you're speaking on before you speak. These are, no one has over, you've done anything deliberately, but this is a practice, this is a practice that happens, and as far as the, um, your budget, uh, financial statements, the charter requires that we give you a statement of all the expenditures that happens every month, you get that muffling.
I might have to hold you two minutes, ma'am, ma'am.
I know, it tells you at the top, real quick, it tells you at the top, what you, the last balance was from the month before, and at the bottom was left. So please review them, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm gonna close out citizens' comments here, I'm going to try to, we're not supposed to speak during citizens' comments, this is the floor for citizens, but when you, when you ask me a question. We're not supposed to speak during citizens' comments. This is the floor for citizens. But when you, when you ask me a question, it has been very frustrating for people in the past. I've watched people march out of here in frustration. I'm gonna try and get your questions, if no place else in my council affairs, so that we can attempt to get you an answer or ask the person with that knowledge. I don't see my team from, I see my team from the water department online to try and get those questions answered for you. I just want to make it clear that, not to frustrate the citizens, if we don't address your question during the actual meeting, it's because the answer may take longer than we have a realistic timeframe to hear. And it'd probably be better one-on-one with the person that can answer your question. I will do my best to try and get those questions answered during my own council affair. So closing out citizens' participation, we're gonna move into the budget. We're starting with item five under finance. That is the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Budget amendments. City Council, what is your pleasure on this item? Item five?
I move to approve the budget amendment for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four.
Chair, offer the second. Do we have questions, concerns, dissent? Questions? Go right ahead.
Is someone here to explain the actual amendment?
Hey, Carl.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening. Might adjust the actual payments for final ARPA grant funds and explain that.
The revenue? Yeah, so the, the money we got three years ago from ARPA, we, the council approved to spend that over a two-year period. So last fiscal year, fiscal twenty-three, half of it was used. And then this fiscal year, the other half was used. Originally, it was budgeted all in a year ago and the budget was never amended to incorporate the second payment which we used the current year. So that's the balance of all our. Public safety payroll.
Public safety payroll?
Yes.
And additional court revenue?
So the lack of officers means a lack of tickets written, which means a lack of revenue. So our revenues are down, that negative three hundred thousand dollars you see there, our revenues are down under budget by the three hundred thousand dollars. That's actual revenues received through the end of this fiscal year. So the, the issue with being a district control unit, which is what we are, we are legally responsible to fund the court's budget, which is somewhere around seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually. So regardless if they bring in one dollar worth of revenue or two million dollars worth of revenue, we're required to fund their departmental budget in the general fund. So we're at the mercy of the fines and fees collected on behalf of the court to fund it. So in this case here, we probably collected about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars and their budget's about seven seventy-five. And so again, this amendment just adjusts the court to, they reduced the amount that we actually received.
Except this once, once a year. I think you said quarterly.
I would love to be here quarterly. Yes, yes. Yes, so remember, I was hired about two and a half years ago. So the first one, you guys were only here a month, I believe. And then the last year, again, there was only one amendment during the year. So my normal practice is quarterly. I'd love to be here before you quarterly to discuss in detail every single one of the amendments that I. Yeah, I guess that must have been through Eleanor. I don't remember seeing that. So, okay. Yeah, they're out there. They're, I think they're out there. The statute of limitations is seven years. So we can go at least back that far, so. Okay. Well, the state has the audit reports. They don't have budget reports. So we'd have to see what we, what we can see in the archives here. So I'll swing track down.
Carl?
Yes, sir.
What time are you real nice here? When did you find out that you were going to be over budget? What month? Did this, did the accounting realize that they were going to be over budget since everybody wants to come up here and feel some kind of way? What month was it you found out that you were going to be over budget?
So there isn't a particular month. So on a quarterly basis, I file reports with the state of Michigan. And at that's the point when I look at things on a quarterly basis, you're not over budget until your department's over budget. So you, we may have specific line items that are over budget. So as an example, the lawsuit judgment, the second we paid one of them, we were over budget because the budget was zero. You also got to keep in mind that our budget is set extremely tight. You know, we do not have enough revenues to cover our operating costs. We run a very, very tight budget. So any variances such as, like a DVW had significant equipment repairs during the current year for their trucks and their vehicles and those kind of things. So that one was over budget. But like, things like the lawsuits, I don't budget to lose lawsuits every single year. We don't have, if I have to, if I budget two hundred grand for lawsuits, then I have to cut somewhere else to be able to budget them. So that was a budget of zero. So the second we did that, that line item was over and could have come before you. So in general, the earliest, I would say by the first amendment, by the first quarter, I would have identified overages.
Okay. So by the first quarter, what would that month have been?
September.
September. So Carl, I'm looking at this list here. And I don't have a problem with the legal, the legal judgments. That's eight hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
There's another two hundred and thirty thousand dollars paid to the lawyers who handled those legal disputes. That brings us to a million and thirty.
Correct.
Okay. So there's another eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars here that you guys knew in advance about, didn't tell us about, didn't come to us with it, but you waited to the deadline, to the last two weeks of June to tell us about it. So everybody's sitting here mad that we didn't approve these amendments.
So Shapi, we will not yell and berate anybody.
I'm thinking of, we, you had plenty of time to let us know about the overages of this budget, but you went ahead and spent it anyway. And then you want me to piggyback on to your foolishness and allow you to get away with it. And then next year, you're going to do the same damn thing again and wait till the last two weeks of the deadline to tell us about these overages. And every time I ask you for something or I ask you to do something, it never happens. We never see it. We don't get no information. We don't get no updates. Nobody wants to explain shit. Nobody wants to explain nothing here to us.
If you.
But the moment that we don't sign on with you, the moment we don't play along with you, everybody's got a damn attitude.
Have I ever declined coming to here to talk, to go over anything with you? I haven't.
We have asked.
I will be, I will be here anytime.
Ms. Al Shapi, would you mind lowering your voice?
We have asked several times for information. We have asked for an understanding. We have asked for a sit-down. We have gotten nothing. Now, true, you do come here and explain, but your explanations are minimum and best.
I can sit here for six hours.
Exactly. We're not giving that six hours for you to sit here to talk to.
You've come to my office and we've sat and talked with you first got here for several hours. I'm available every single day.
Is you knew that this happened ahead of time. It would have been prudent on the administration to get this to us back in March or April. Why did we wait up to the last two weeks of June, two weeks before the deadline? And then everybody's wondering, oh, my God, what's gonna happen? What's gonna happen? We approved the budget. So I asked questions. I asked questions.
Point of order, point of order.
I asked questions about the amendments and I didn't know answers.
Point of order.
So Carl, let's.
Point of order, point of order, sir.
Councilman.
Ms. Carl, hold on a second. For the record, every single month, we receive financial statements from their department outlining the expenditures from the previous month. We receive it every single month.
So Carl, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Al Shapi.
Hold on a second, Carl. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna read this off to you.
Okay.
Okay. So transfer out FIA building fund, forty thousand dollars.
Yes.
City building storm water.
Do you want me to answer each of those?
No.
Okay.
Just, just, just give me a second.
Okay, sure.
Okay. City building storm water, ten thousand dollars. Compensation access, two thousand dollars to a Mr. Tahit. Okay, um, you have active employee, sixteen thousand dollars. Floor expenditures, thirty-six thousand dollars. Contractual service dumpsters, twenty thousand dollars. DTE streetlights, thirty thousand dollars. Repair and maintenance vehicles, forty thousand dollars. Now, mind you, this is all extra. This is extra money, correct?
This is increasing the budget.
Okay. So, so the increase in vehicle repairs is forty thousand dollars. I got no problem with that. The police department and the fire department need to have their vehicles up and running. Okay, but that's a forty thousand dollar increase. Gasoline and oil is twenty-five thousand dollars extra. Repair and maintenance is ninety thousand dollars extra.
We're coming up on fifteen minutes and I'm about to call for the vote.
Insurance general liability is up eighty grand. But here's something I find interesting here, right? Metro Consulting spent a hundred and eighty thousand dollars over their budget. That's a hundred and eighty grand more to Damian, Gary and him out of our general fund, which shouldn't be coming out the general fund. But here we are taking money out the general fund to support Metro Consulting. That's a hundred and eighty grand. But nobody's reading that, right? Nobody had an idea about that, right? You just paid an extra one hundred and eighty grand to Metro Consulting, your water department, something they shouldn't even have.
Yep. Ms. Mr. Shapi, you yielded the floor to Ms. Manica. Ms. Manica? The floor is yielded. So. Nope, 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 nope. Ms. Manica, Ms. Manica. Ms. Manica, I recognize you. I recognize Ms. Manica. Go right ahead, ma'am. We receive this statement every month from the finance department. Ms. Manica, if you would. Ms. Manica, if you would. Ms. Manica, please. Ms. Al Shapi, thank you. No, we got it every month. We got it every single, Ms. Gracie, Ms. Gracie, Ms. Gracie, please. Ms. Gracie, please. Ms. Manica, you had, the floor is yours.
Yeah, you can go ahead and call for the vote.
Ms. Manica?
I just wanted to say, I think.
You're gonna give it to us at the last minute. Okay. My fault, though.
We need to just get a understanding. And if we're gonna really be upset about something, we should be upset about the amount of money we spend out on lawsuits.
That's what we should be upset about. Thank you, ma'am. I will call for the vote. But prior to calling for the vote, I will say again to the audience, we receive a statement from the finance department every single month and for, and for, and for eighteen months, the financial statement was not received. Would you please call the vote on item five? That is the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget amendments. Take the roll, please.
I'm gonna say yes, but they believe you dropped.
Yes, Councilwoman Pro Tim Robinson.
Say yes for you. Enjoy.
Councilwoman Pro Tim Robinson.
Me, leave the ground, then fight.
Council President Thomas.
Yes. Do we get a vote from Pro Tim? Per the charter, Madam Pro Tim, you can't abstain. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Moving on to item six, under the mayor's office, a resolution to approve the agreement between Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network and the City of Highland Park Summer Youth Employment Program. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the resolution to approve an agreement between Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network and the City of Highland Park Summer Youth Employment Program.
Chair, offer the second. So we have a resolution, we have the motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to approve the resolution to approve agreement between Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network and the City of Highland Park Summer Youth Employment Program. Questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Clerk, would you call the vote on item six?
Councilwoman Shafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pro Tim Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item seven, under the city clerk, this is a resolution to approve the establishment of polling places and the rate of pay for election workers for the August sixth, twenty twenty-four statewide primary election. City Council, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the resolution to approve the establishment of polling places and the rate of pay for election workers for the August sixth, two thousand twenty-four statewide primary election.
I mean, we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution, to approve item seven. That's the resolution to approve establishment of polling places for the rate of pay, seconded by the chair. Questions, concerns? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on item seven?
Councilwoman Shafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item eight, under the community development, this is a resolution to submit an application for the MISHDA MI Neighborhood Grant. Do we have? Yes, ma'am, I need a motion. Yes.
I move to approve. Sorry, just to submit an application for MISHDA, Michigan Neighborhood.
Chair, offer a second. It's out on the floor. Let me do this for Ms. Ford. So. I want to give you the Cliff Noe version, but I want to make sure that it is also as complete as possible. So on our desk, we have the motion to approve the resolution. And the resolution is, MISHDA has announced that the Neighborhood Housing Initiative Division, NHID, is launching the Michigan Neighborhood Program, which will provide up to sixty million dollars in funding to be regularly distributed statewide for housing activities. This new program's application process streamlined access to three main housing activities, rehabilitation, new units and/or community-based public amenities. And whereas the City of Highland Park desires to apply for the rehabilitation activity, which is intended to preserve existing housing stock and whereas our proposal will target resources to meet the needs of the City of Highland Park and demonstrate appropriate size and scope of the activities, ranging from smaller-scale energy efficiencies to accessibility improvements to sustainable rehabilitation. And whereas each homeowner may receive a grant up to a maximum of forty thousand dollars. And whereas the city desires to apply for funding in line with the goals to create a livable and sustainable community by providing high quality of life for all citizens while retaining the city's historic character and creating opportunities for new investment. And now therefore be a resolve, the City of Highland Park approves applying for the MISHDA Neighborhood Grant. So that is just the application process. Let me get a little bit deeper into the program. So the overview is that. So funding goes for fiscal year twenty-four, the MI Neighborhood will provide up to sixty million dollars of fundings for projects statewide across all activities. Regional investment targets have been developed using equitable, transparent and data-driven strategies. Regions are based on the fifteen regional housing partnerships identified in the statewide housing plan. You can get this on the MISHDA website. The size of the awards, the beginner, zero, these are for a beginner, these are grants on a zero to two. Zero to two grants for developer units are implemented by applicant up to two hundred thousand dollars for the intermediate. That is three to four grants for developer units implemented by application up to four hundred thousand dollars. The advanced grants will be five plus grants or developer units implemented by applicants up to two million dollars. Plus up to eighteen percent administrative funds based on documented expenditures or up to eighteen percent developer fees or combination of both. Up to a total of eighteen percent administrative funds, developer fees will be calculated and determined by MISHDA. So requests over four hundred thousand dollars require a one-to-one leverage, meaning whoever is the requested will also have to match that amount with equal funds. Source of leverage subject to MISHDA approval. So what they're basically talking about is, I described the grant, it talked about the size. Remember, the, the grant applicant will be the City of Highland Park. And the funds will be dispersed to individual residents within the city. So eligible applications, it must be an entity. Individuals are ineligible. So this is not gonna go to anybody. This is gonna go to a city who will then administer these funds to its citizens. Eligible applicants include nonprofit organizations or units of general local government. So hopefully that provided a little bit more explanation as to who's providing the funds. That would be MISHDA. The type of funding levels or tiers, if you will, and who the applicants can be. In this case, the City of Highland Park is a local government. We are a municipal nonprofit. We are your executive board sitting in front of you. And this will go through the city's administration. So the application will probably come out of the Community Economic Development Department. the application will probably come out of the Community Economic Development Department. We'll vote to accept it, and then it'll be administered through the city. Um, any additional questions? I'm sure we could have addressed one-on-one, if you wanted to talk to somebody within the CED department, but I wanted to make sure that we expanded that conversation out. So do we have any questions, concerns? Otherwise, I'll call for the vote on item eight. Ms. Manica, please.
Just want to make sure that, um, you're going to, it's not going to residents, it's going to the city, right, to work in the downtown area or not? I asked what.
It, it's in there too, Ms. Manica, I just. Yeah. You got it.
So I was saying that Bob Burgess is working on this grant, but normally it'll come to the city, and I'm not sure how it's dispersed to the residents.
I'm, I'm familiar with the process a little bit. The residents will have to apply.
Right.
And they'll have to meet the criteria. And then MISHDA will give oversight to the city. All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on item eight? A, the resolution to submit an application.
Councilwoman Ashapi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item eight B, the resolution to approve the addendum to extend the contract to Title Check LLC Auction Services to the city auction, to auction city-owned properties. City Council, what is your pleasure?
Move to adopt the resolution to approve addendum to extend contract with the Title Check LLC Auction Services to Auction City Own Property.
Chair offers a second. Do we have questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Proton?
So do we have any thing in black and white that's on property that they sold? And they're not, they were sold from the last auction? Can we get a copy of that, please?
Yes. So it was on twenty the last time, and six, so. Right.
So I know we're going to go back on the auction.
So out of the fourteen, some of them are going back, and some of them have been, um, identified as emergency demos.
Okay, I have, this might be a little off topic, but, um, in regards to people that's living next to vacant homes, that they're taking care of, people squatters out, drug dealers and stuff like that, that actually take care of the homes. How can they purchase that house that's next to them?
So the new charter that was adopted in nineteen does not allow the city to sell residential homes. They have to go through auction. Per the charter, yep. Residential, uh, residential structures does.
All right, can we call for the vote? I'm sorry. You have questions?
Yeah, um, in the last auction, what was your starting bid?
They, they varied.
Ah, yeah, yeah, they varied, not checked. The lowest bid was nine thousand dollars. The last auction, the lowest bid was nine thousand.
Right.
I know, you know.
Yeah. So they all varied, right.
So, so just be straight up.
You asked me. They varied, they did vary. I don't know what the lowest one was.
The lowest bid was nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
That, that was the starting.
Lowest starting bid, okay.
That was the lowest starting bid.
Right.
For the last auction.
So the difference between that auction and this auction. They started them based off, uh, the market value, but with an auction, after we did more due diligence and research, is that because it's an auction, you don't have to start at that point.
Okay.
You can set your auction at where you want to start.
So, Mr. Carter, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that, and if they got the property and we say, one, and now they're willing to be reasonable force of residence on whatever else is left, if they're trying to stay on that.
I don't understand what you said, what you asked.
Now, one resident here, I don't care who they are, or what their financial background is, now one if you got nine thousand dollars.
So this one, this, this auction, we're starting everything at a thousand.
Okay, now, that should be done in the first auction.
Okay.
It's all right, though.
Yeah.
It's all right, though, because it's been made clear to me that some residents are comfortable with the grip.
So my.
I'll let the grip continue on. Please call for the vote.
Uh, Madam Proton?
Do you want me to finish? So, they, so, this, this auction, so since they have to be recorded, what I'll talk to Title Check about, and the reason why we want to do a two-year, um, extension, because on their books, this auction will be August nineteenth. The contract ends August eighth, so we need to get it in and everything done, so August nineteenth would be good. So my conversation with them is, we're going to start everything at a thousand dollars. Whatever doesn't sell, the next auction will go lower. Just a lower starting point, to get rid of this inventory.
Okay, I see you, Madam Proton, go ahead. I see you as well, Ms. Manica, and then we'll call for the vote.
Auction list, whenever I get to sell anything, I, I, I do a round. Some of these homes had trees growing on them.
Yeah, I agree.
Chose these homes to be put on auction.
I wasn't here then. I don't know who chose them.
Okay, Ms. Manica?
So, so just real quick to your point, that's why they won't go back on. That's why they were scheduled for emergency demo, to remove them, so they won't be sold. And when we do get demo dollars, we can knock those that's got trees growing through them, and that's need to be demoed, we can get them down, and we, we can look at inventory that can be saved.
So don't we have demo dollars in there?
No. We have to work on, um, to get some dollars for demo.
Okay, Ms. Manica. And then we'll.
One already, title was the same thing we used before, and it's a thousand dollars. Also, are we going to be affected with the treasury situation, treasurer situation?
No, no, the reason why is because we already have these, so the treasurer's role is to get the, get the properties from the revert, no, when, when we get them from, so they're already in inventory. So there, this is inventory that we already have, that we can move through. Yes.
And is there anybody that is not allowed to participate in the auction?
So you can, you can only, um, be successful on three. Now, if you successfully did, and we find out that you owe a debt to the city, you won't be able to purchase it.
What kind of debt, sir?
Water, taxes, any, if you owe any money to the city, county, just similar to regular property sales. The only thing is, is the front end, because it's an auction. So just because you win the bid and get the property don't mean that you'll be able to claim the property.
Last two questions, can the city employees or related officials or appointed officials participate in the auction?
It doesn't say that you can. But, you know, that's illegal, uh, Mike, what'd you think?
Yeah, I've taken a look at the chair, I know that, that question's come up before, I think.
I, I, I mean, I kind of looked, I didn't see where it said that you couldn't.
I see you, Madam Proton.
And last thing, is there anything, uh, do we have something put in place for a time limit, and people have to start working on those properties, or finishing?
Absolutely, but, um, the last auction, that didn't get in. So I'm already talking to the auctioneer about making sure the things that that's in the charter and the ordinance is passed through for the auction. So the reverberance and everything like that, it's, it's a time limit, so it'll be set even as far as how long you have to completely rehab it. So all of that is going to be outlined in the actual, uh, rules and regulations where it wasn't the last time.
Madam Proton?
Okay, I have a question. What funds did you use for that emergency demo? Because we have a lot, and I know you know, a lot of homes that you give to the emergency demo.
The emergency demo that. I'm not sure. I'm, and that's honest, that's honest, because. Yeah, I will, because I submitted, they like, well, we're going to work through that, but it was our property, it was leaning on somebody's house. So I was tasked to get it off the person's house.
Okay.
And. I, I agree, I agree. We got eighty-three houses that we need to demo. That's the number.
All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on item eight B, please? Resolution to approve the addendum to extend the contract with Title Check?
Councilwoman Ashapi.
I don't want no parts of it, my vote is no.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item eight C, this is the resolution to approve option to purchase the sale of commercial lots located at sixteen oh two five, sixteen oh three nine, and sixteen oh five one, Hamilton to Aphrodisiac Incorporated. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the resolution, resolution to approve Linda Wheeler, and the Highland Park. No, I'm sorry, purchase law, I'm.
Option to purchase.
I move to approve the resolution to approve the option to purchase and sell commercial lot located in sixteen oh two five, sixteen oh three nine, and sixteen oh five one, Hamilton to Aphrodisiac Incorporated. I should need, okay, that's okay. Should options purchased be timely exercised by auction?
Chair offers a second. We have questions, concerns? Let's call the roll on that item, please. This is for item eight C.
Councilwoman Ashapi.
It's C.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries, thank you very much. You got a lot today. Three, actually. Best of luck to you. Best of luck to you. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, this is the portion of the program for citizens' participation. Let me go ahead and get my helmet and mouthpiece ready. Because if you could see some of these, ooh. Okay, um. I'm gonna hold you to your time.
Ranting everybody, my name is Linda Wheeler.
The last one was three.
This is not a criticism, this is just, it's all about presentation. When we have company and visitors come into the house, look at those blinds.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way we can get funding for that? Uh, look, please, look at this podium. Even if you don't have money for, you know, for clothes, a mother always makes sure her children are neat and clean. Maybe you can go to the secondhand store. Is there a secondhand store we can go to? This, this, this really, this is not, this is not a good look for Highland Park at all, and it hasn't been for years. I'm asking council to please work with our citizens to find a solution for those blinds. Please, please. It's not, it's not a good look at all. It really isn't. We have a lot to be proud of. When we have visitors come to our city, come to the council meetings, look at the first thing they see. I'm asking for your help, please, and whatever I can do, please, I, I, I'm willing to help, and also maybe a little fan or something, too. I understand that the fans were kind of loud, they said, you know, that's why they weren't here. But for years, they were right in that spot, but let, let's start with the blinds.
That's exactly what my mother said. Do something with them, Lance.
Hello, my name's Gracie Wooton, uh, from Easton Street, and I, I want to apologize for the outburst. I know that was wrong, you know, that, you know, just broke all decorum, and, um, I apologize. And, uh, to my representative, my councilperson, uh, Mr. Ashapi, you know, like I apologize for screaming at you, you know, that was just not, uh, what I normally do. Um, I wanted to just talk about, just bring up two things. One, um, about the, uh, problem one of the residents had on Easton Street, um, and she reached out to me, uh, two-two-six Easton. A water main broke, um, in front of her house, and she wasn't pleased with the way the area was left. You know, and so she was, uh, she, she asked me to help her get in touch with the water department and, you know, and I have not heard from them, you know, and, uh, she had her granddaughter. Her granddaughter was trying to help her out, too, but, um, she, um, I don't know if they finally got a, some kind of resolution. The, uh, like I said, the water department, you know, I left a, you know, a message, but they didn't, um, I wasn't the homeowner, so they were reluctant to talk to me, you know. But I, I hope that situation, you know, has been resolved. Uh, the other thing that I just want to bring up real quickly is that, um, I represent the Highland Park, uh, water advocates, and we've been working, you know, with, uh, the city to try to, uh, get that, um, you know, the settlement that happened, you know, in Highland Park. You know, we worked very hard, you know, we had residents like Linda Wheeler, who was, uh, you know, she was, uh, sending messages to, uh, Gleywa on, uh, during their meetings, you know. We, we organized and went to Lansing, you know, some of the council members, like Councilwoman Robinson, she went with us to Lansing when we were advocating, you know, for uh, the protection, you know, of Highland Park citizens from, uh, the, the levy and everything that, uh, Gleywa was intending to impose upon us. Um, there are people, uh, who are supporting a, uh, water affordability bill. It's a whole package of bills, and, uh, our representative, uh, Chang, our Senator Chang, and also our representative McFaul, are part of the people who actually uh, have, uh, written parts of this, uh, water affordability bill, which is excellent. And I sent a letter to the council in hopes that, um, the council would support, uh, you know, write, uh, uh, you will write to the, uh, legislators and let them know that we as a city support this package of bills. Um, it's a, it's a statewide effort, and, uh, mayors of other cities, representatives in other cities, have, you know, reached out to legislators and to Tate, and, uh, to also to the senate head, to let them know that, you know, we are in support of this. So, uh, residents in Highland Park actually signed petitions, we sent petitions to, uh,
Ms. Gracie.
Okay, so anyway, you got the letter, I'm, I'm not going to try to read it, but, um, you know, I hope that you will support, write either, you know, either a, uh, resolution or even a letter of support to.
Yes, ma'am.
The representatives.
Thank you so much. I, I just want everybody to know, it is, when you the timekeeper, it's hard to be uniform, especially when you're talking to your neighbors. It is not comfortable and or pleasant to interrupt you when you are here speaking. You don't get an opportunity to really voice, but we have to keep these rules because, uh, a lawless society is not exactly what we want. We make a lot of conversation about following the rules, but I intend to try and do exactly that. If you will, ma'am, podium is yours.
Thank you. Good evening to, uh, council, to the mayor, and to the community. I just want to thank, uh, the Highland Park Fire Department for coming to our sixth annual, uh, Shangol Lights Fireworks Festival. Um, it is such a pleasure to have, uh, and collaborate with the fire department for them to come and make sure that everything was safe. I really appreciate that. And then also, I want to extend an invitation for, uh, July the thirtieth. We have KRS-One coming to the village for a concert from seven to eleven, and you're welcome to come. You can go to www dot theavalonvillage dot org to purchase a ticket. The proceeds go to programming for the music program for the children, uh, at the homework house and at the village. Thank you so much. Peace and love.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take somebody online. No, wait, come on, sir. The people I see, uh, Ms. Yolanda, I see you, Ms. Turner Johnson, I see you both. If you guys just hold on for a second, I'm, we're gonna have to take the gentleman.
Thank you, Council President, council members, city clerk, and, uh, great attorney back there. Thank you guys very much. Um, yeah, I'm here again, I'm going to keep bugging you. But, um, I've been sitting there listening to those lawsuits. And, uh, a lot of times, you as a city can get out in front of lawsuits before they even happen. And the fact that I've spoken on this over and over and over that if something horrendous happens up there, City of Highland Park is going to be responsible first. Because they're going to ask each one of you guys, what did you do about it? Who did you talk to about it? And that's gonna be massive. That's gonna be massive. I love this town. Everybody in this town is one person away from the next person. Somebody's mother is, is my mother. Somebody's sister is my sister. Or my sister knows their sister. So it's very important to me that we get up there, man, and put a yield sign. I'm not even asking for a stop sign, a yield sign, because people come through Highland Park every day. And the way these youngsters drive today, everybody races to the light. Everybody wants to be, they, they drive like they don't want nobody in front of them. Man, if you drive, somebody gonna be in front of you. Please, let's take this to the next level and get that thing put up. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now I have people online. I have Ms. Yolanda. If you will go ahead and unmute.
All right, can you hear me?
Emma, can.
All right, I got it right the first time. Excited. All right, two things. The first thing is, with the property that we sold on Hamilton, I'm seeing that there's a little, uh, the way it's being presented is different than what we've seen in the past, right? So we had the group that wanted to come and purchase the Highland, the individual who wanted to purchase the Highland Park Caucus Club, gave a dollar amount, um, and because we still had questions or there was still some, some things that needed to be done, it was tabled. Now we have this new group that's coming and wanting to buy the property on Hamilton. Um, and I didn't hear a dollar amount, I didn't hear what we're using it for, if that's information that city council has before. I think that's something that they could be, share with, um, the citizens, um, because it, it just, it, it is not aligned. Uh, even the gentleman, um, where the Little Caesar's Building is, uh, DMC Properties, he talked about buying the, the property on the other side of the alley so that he can put in a parking lot. Again, these were people who came and we had questions, um, council had questions, and, and they've been shot down. So I'm a little con- concerned about that. And then the final thing I have is, um, eighteen months in, and we still don't realize we need a sergeant-at-arms. This kind of conversation that's going back and forth between city council, I'm gonna just call people out, because, you know, we all sitting here. Um, the way, um, District Three Chair person spoke to the, um, administration, um, that's, that's not acceptable, not at all. And they're not adhering to you, Chair, when you're telling them, let's stop. So I don't know how we can get that done. Any citizens out there, uh, maybe we can get a conversation going outside of council and demand that they have somebody who's going to facilitate and make sure the facilitation of these meetings are productive. And that's all I had. You all have an amazing day.
Ma'am, stay online. I, I wrote your questions down. I'll try to answer those questions during council affairs. Okay, uh, also, Ms. Turner Johnson, are you still there? I'm asking you to unmute. You had your hand up?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Council President. I have two things quickly. One is an invitation to the Youth Voice Festival, which will be held Sunday, July seventh, at Park Place. Carlton Clyburn has a youth organization called the Highland Park Youth Advocacy Alliance, and based along with my sister's keeper, my brother's keeper, uh, Positively HP. We're all working together to help him bring youth and young adults to this event. It will be held at Park Place, Sunday, from two o'clock until six o'clock. And I know I have emailed invitations to all of the council members. I hope that you have gotten them. I will email you another reminder. There are flyers on the front desk at City Hall, so the residents can pick up flyers. So please get the word out. Youth and young adults will be encouraged at this festival to get out the vote. This is all about getting out the vote. Uh, the second thing is that I did send an email to council members regarding the pilot, which was discussed at the last council meeting. I didn't hear from anybody but Council President. So I'm wondering if the other council members got the email and if there are any questions about the pilot. We did have a conversation. I did run into, uh, Councilwoman Manica. I know she said she got it. But, uh, the, the recommendation is that going forward to have, for council to have a meeting with Mishda about development, because there are so many variables and affordable housing development is very complicated, it's very complex. And it would be wonderful for council to get ahead of the game. We will be getting more presentations from developers who want to do affordable housing development, and Mishda is the expert. Mishda should come and explain all of the intricacies, so that next time you get a development project that comes before you, you will be better equipped to, uh, assess that project and represent the, uh, city's interests, uh, in, in the best light. So those are the two things that I have, and I would appreciate it if the council members who didn't respond to the email, if you would let me know that you got the email about the pilot and if it was helpful, or if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I have one more person, and we're moving into council affairs. I have a citizen online, Ms. McDonald. As a citizen, please go right ahead.
Okay, uh, first I want to thank you guys for approving the, uh, amendments. Secondly, I want to say, uh, my, as far as my administration, we will no longer come to these meetings if they're gonna be berated, yelled at, screamed at, and talked to like they are, they are lower than what they are. I will not tolerate it. And I'm not, I would hope that the council would, we, think about that before unleashing your, on our, our, our employees. That was very disrespectful. Carl comes before you guys anytime you ask, and then he goes beyond when he's not even supposed to. Because the law says you have to come through me to set up meetings, and some of you continue to do it otherwise. And he still accommodate you. But to talk to him like he is not anything will not be tolerated by me. As the mayor, as a citizen, and anyone else, any of my administration. You can ask your questions, you can talk to them about whatever it is, but you will not berate them. Not under my watch. Because we will not come to council meetings, and it, and it's not our meetings, it's yours. We don't have to be there. We can sit online. So if this behavior continues, they, they will not be upcoming. And you can vote any way you want to.
And to that, Ms. Mayor, I'm gonna have to hold you to your two minutes. I got one to speak.
I'm done.
I got one more, and we might be out of here before ten o'clock. Depending on how council affairs goes, because I got a humdinger coming. All right, sir.
Thank you, council. City officials, thank you for your.
Say your name for the record, sir.
B Anthony Holly.
Thanks, sir.
Yes. Um, I, uh, I came here, hmm, maybe about ninety days ago, three months ago, with a, uh, concern. And, um, there have been multiple people even today that have voiced concerns about the money wasted on city lawsuits. And, um, and I've heard at least three comments made about it today. And as I said over ninety days ago, I filed a formal complaint, police report, and came to this body to raise this issue to your attention of DPW, uh, attempting to clean up a city of property using city equipment, knocking a ten-foot hole into my property. And.
Can I have your address, sir?
Two nine two Moss Street.
Two nine two?
Correct.
Come on.
And, uh, I've asked for transparency. I've been very reasonable. And it seems like there's a pattern of you don't get action unless you sue the city. And that is not acceptable. And as a citizen, I do my best to, uh, be responsible, be accountable, be reasonable. But it's, uh, it's unfortunate that ninety days later, I have no resolution. Only action that has been taken is a board up by, a joint board up by Police Chief McMahon and DPW, um, which is not even sufficient enough to keep rodents out of the property. So, um, I've asked for transparency. I've asked for reasonable communication, and I have not, uh, been able to get this resolved in ninety days, uh, or even have communication, regular communication with the legal department or any type of reasonable communication about this. And it's prevented me from being able to do what I want to do with the property. Um, and so wanted to raise that to your attention. Had some other things to raise, but that took a little too long, so I'll just leave it there. Uh, we need to have a better process for, as the gentleman said earlier, mitigating the risk of lawsuits. It's unacceptable, um, what people have to do in order to get justice or even an opportunity for justice. We ought to do better.
Okay, sir. Thank you. I'm sorry about your, your situation. Uh, I wrote your address down. And, um, that, that, that function under DPW and, um, city administration, that is the mayor's office. I'm, I'm sure she has tried to make, maybe she has or have not met the mayor's on the line. So, Madam Mayor, you heard this gentleman, Mr. B Anthony at two nine two Moss. Um, I'm assuming you can come back and follow up with the mayor's office. Okay, no. Okay, thank you, ma'am. So we're gonna move into, we're gonna close to this participation. Uh, we're gonna move into council affairs, starting with the councilman from the third district.
Okay. I'm not going to discuss anything from tonight. It's irrelevant. Um, do you remember December of last year? When they came before this body and asked for rate increase on your water? You remember that, right? And you remember they told you it would be for six months, right? From January first to June thirtieth. What is today's date? Okay. So you told us six months of these water rate hikes, and I want the administration to keep its word. I want the water rate hikes gone. We are being bled dry here on these fees, on these water bills. It's not the water in the sewers that's killing you, it's the administrative fees that's killing you. Okay? If, if you look at your bill, and you know I'm not lying, if you look at your bill, it's the administrative fees that are killing you. Water readiness bill. Oh, 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 a sewer, sewer, sewer readiness bill. Administrative fees, office fees. Bill fee, I, 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 I can't believe I actually got a fee for the bill in which they think. That's amazing to me. But they promised us, I remember when the mayor stood here, when Kathy Square stood here, and so did Damian Garrett, and they each said six months. Am I lying or am I dying? They said six months, correct? They did say six months, right? I'm not old and see now. I did hear six months, right? If they extend these water rates to December, you need to fire everybody sitting up here. I will recall every single one of us. I voted no then on the water rate hike. I'll vote now on the water rate hike. It needs to end. You said six months. I need to see it go away, and I need to see a resolution at the next council meeting disbanding the water rate hikes. Now I know that we may have to go up a little bit, but two hundred percent, you gotta be out of your rabbit mind. Two hundred percent is outrageous. My bill went from one seventy-five to three fifty. Three fifty, and I can only imagine what your water bills are. And I know there is some people in here on Colorado, oh, you remember the last water rate hike that y'all had? You had fifty thousand dollars in your bill, just on your block alone. But I know you remember the last time something like this happened. We can't do a repeat. I don't mind a little hike, but two hundred percent is unacceptable. It's, it's July first. Six months is up. What are they gonna do about it? And I yield back.
Ms. Manica?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to, um, send a shout out to the parade that took place for Juneteenth. It was, it was nice. It was nice. I think they had some fun. I think they had fun. Also, I want to also thank, uh, Parker Village, Juan Shannon, who are partner with me to do what we call Project Sixty-Five on June nineteenth. And that was to give out sixty-five cases of water to seniors sixty-five and above on June nineteenth, which, or Juneteenth, uh, which happened in eighteen sixty-five. Also, I want to make mention of the Reg Center does have camp, athletic camp, as well as some other camp going on. Also, starting July seventh, there will be, I think he's still having it, uh, Mr. Clyburn is part of this as well, and so is, so, um, his bass, my brother's keeper, Positively HP. It is Youth Voice Fest. Your voice, your vote. Get out and vote. Use your power. Voting allows our community to determine our destiny. Register to vote, cash your ballot in upcoming primary and general election. Empower yourself to empower the community. So remember that's coming also twelve PM to six PM. In case I did not mention, that will be at Park Place, one five eight eight five Woodward Avenue. Uh, also remember this, guys. Uh, young people, you have any young people that may be interested in any of the areas that we talk about? That, that's what we have to start doing. We have to start getting our young people involved because they need to be here, because that's who we want. We keep saying we're doing things for them to be here. But if they're not involved and don't know how this works, it's less likely that you're going to get, you're gonna continue to get, um, senior people. I don't mean at an age, senior people. Um, also, last thing, mentioning seniors, please check out some of the senior activities that are happening in our city. I really want to say to you that I think we have excellent senior programs going on. Um, it's also listed upfront, if you want to pick it up, along with the other things that are happening in the city. But they're talking about everything from teaching seniors computers and giving them computers and teaching them technology to caregivers who have, are learning how to deal with the people they're caregiving and dementia, et cetera. I'm just trying to give out some of the programs that you might not be aware of. We always say we don't hear about them and know that they're out there, but they are, and they are in your city. So please keep that in mind. You have any young people, uh, we did vote tonight on the summer program. I think it's listed on the door for youth to, um, hear, hear again. They may not be necessarily learning the government, but they will have a summer job. And hopefully, in there somewhere, we teach them about banking or finances. I feel like I'm missing somebody or something that I should announce. And so forgive me if I missed what you asked me, uh, to announce. We also celebrated a lot of birthdays this past weekend for some of our seniors in our city from eighty to a hundred. So know that we still have people in our city that are a hundred years old, you know, uh, or as old as a hundred years old. So keep that in mind. Again, thank you for coming out. Thank you for your, oh, I know what it is, for sharing. It's different when you share how you're feeling about what we're doing or what we could be doing or how you can help us versus seeing the same people over and over again. That way you know that it's just not us talking. It's also the community that's asking for some of those things. So there are a lot of other meetings. So again, I ask that you look at your community calendar and take, come to the police, the chat with the chief. Come to the, um, block club meeting. Go to the school board meeting. Go to the planning commission. Go visit some of those meetings, so you actually really know what's going on and you can understand. Again, I thank you. Thank you for your service and thank you for your commitment.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm approaching. Do you have anything tonight?
Yes, um, this question is for the mayor. Is the mayor, are you still online?
I am. I'm here.
Okay. Any guys, Mr. Marcus's juror, um, request, is there any way that DPW could put a yield sign, a temporary yield sign up? And that's fine until we can get with M.D.
The sign has been ordered. They waiting for it to come in. They waiting for it to come in. They're waiting for the yield sign to come in. We don't have any, we don't have any, we're waiting for it to come in.
Thank you, guys. Okay, then one more. Okay, are you finished?
Yes.
You finished, Mayor? Okay, also, okay, we still have a lot of signs missing on our blocks, like the corner of Moss Street. You know, there's not a sign. And it's a lot of signs behind our blocks that don't have signs.
DPW has ordered those signs. They're going around taking the inventory of what is needed. And they're going to start putting up as soon as they come in. We had to order quite a few parking signs because people don't know there's no parking on the left, on the north side of the street. So we have to get new parking signs, street signs. All of these things have to be ordered and spelled and sent in. So there was none at the DPW yard. So right now they're in process of being ordered. And you should still, when they come in, you'll start seeing them go up.
Okay, and I have one last thing. I guess it was a water main break a couple of times on Midland between Second and Woodward. I did take pictures because it's very muddy and messy for the residents that live on Midland between Second and Woodward. And I did send all of that information to Mr. Danny Garrett. And he did send someone out. And I didn't know about the one on East End. So hopefully we can get that taken care of because it's really messy at that. God bless you all.
Okay. I'm not going to be nice. But I'm going to tell the truth. For those people who I'm just meeting today, I am not supposed to be sitting in this chair. In fact, I filled out my affidavit on the last day to become a candidate, two hours before the window closed. I came into the clerk's office, stood out a form. And I thought I was just going to participate in the process. I was tired of the elected officials, many of whom I had talked to, being berated by citizens. And no one wanted to step up and participate. And I said to myself, well, hell, I live here. I got a wife and kids. I'm raising a family. I had a capacity. Maybe I should fill out a form to be a candidate so that I can at least be in the conversation, so that I could at least be in the room. And I had no idea that I was going to wake up the day after the election and be city council president. The mayor alluded to the fact that there have been people tampering with this city for a long time. I know most of the people on my block. I know a lot of people in my choir. But there's absolutely no way in the world that I would have beat Rodney Patrick in a fair election. There has been tampering with this government for years, for years. And I have been at odds with at least three people on the city council because I believe, it's my opinion, that they are part of the group to help with that fanciful, fantastical, whatever amazing result that happened, where you put 1,000 white marbles in a jar, you blindfold somebody, and they pull out four blue. There's only one person that should be sitting in that chair. That is Tamiko Manica. I can't walk down the street with anybody in Highland Park who doesn't know her, who she didn't babysit, who she didn't go to school with, who she's not friends with. That is the one person on city council who deserves to be in these chairs. At least two people falsified their documents. They're sitting here illegally. And I'm going to say that over and over and over and over and over again. Every time I have people from the state of Michigan on, every time I have the attorney general on, every time I have a senator in the building. Because tonight we had an episode of In Living Color. We had people who were responsible for some of the collusive activities coming here to the podium and banging their arm and screaming, hollering, knowing good and well that they are part of the group that the mayor is talking about, meeting together in private and in secret, colluding, trying to undermine the government. It's disgusting. It's despicable. And they don't want me to have this computer screen. I have an email that I can pull up right now where member city council said they want to try and take the controls away from the Zoom from me because they're worried I'm going to put up something that's factual that I can find in the public record, that I can get online and type it up and pull this up, spend $29.95 and do a background check, get a document that is factual that shows people fraudulently getting in the election, fraudulently sitting in these seats. And I'm not going to stop talking about it until the gavel slaps in court and those people are charged and they put handcuffs on them. Because I shouldn't be here, other than the fact that God must have wanted me to be here because my daughters and my wife are still mad at me. But I say to my wife all the time, God must have wanted me to be here because I just wanted to participate. I didn't know I was going to be in this chair. So I'm going to follow the mission. Because I got up this morning, my feet were pointing this way, and I put them flat on the ground. So I'm going to listen to God.
That's right.
Okay, I'm going to listen to God. I don't care who doesn't like it. I'm going to listen to God. And every time I meet a new citizen that tells me I'm doing the right thing, I'm able to ignore anybody who says that I'm not. So let me address the things that we talked about tonight. Ms. Yolanda, the group Aphrodisiac came here four times. They came here four times. Their packet was ready. They were denied. So they were approved today. They should have been approved sometime last year. It took a long time. They came back. They were willing to do business here. We rejected Mr. Martell Mason, who is famous as a coffee buyer. All of some foolishness. Three out of the five people on the city council voted no to the man. And everybody in Metro Detroit came forward to make sure that he had a piece of property. Okay? He was at the train station. He was at Hudson. So you're talking about Ford Motor Company and Dan Gilbert? Looking out for somebody from Highland Park. And Aphrodisiac was trying to get a business here. Highland Park is trying to get a business here. And three out of five of us vote no. It happens on a regular basis. I actually have the numbers. One of our council members has voted no 82% of the time. 82% of the time, this person has voted no to things that are brought to the city by the administration. And mind you, anytime somebody says that there is corruption and collusion, when our mayor now is a retired school teacher, she represents for the first time since I've lived here, Glenn McDonald represents the demographic population of this city. She is an African-American woman who is a mother and a grandmother who has lived a life in this city. She represents the majority population for the first time that I've lived here. Not when a man was mayor, but when a senior woman is mayor. She represents the population. People can say whatever criticisms they want to make about her. She is honest. She is struggling to try and make the people who work here feel like somebody. Because for at least nine years, people came in here and hollered and screamed at them all day long, demoralizing these people with talent and skills. And like a mother, she came in and the very first thing that she did was she showed some love to these people. She showed some love to the city. So when you want to know what a chief executive officer's job is, it is to instill in the corporation the belief that they can be successful. She has done that. So all those people with all that criticism, you can't imagine. Now, one of the citizens said, we get paid for this work. Let me explain something to you. Our mayor makes about $1.25 an hour, one average dollar over the amount of time that she spends. The district council persons get $500 a month. Madam Protim and I get $700 a month, a month. I know I spend over 20 hours a week on city business. The young people working at Popeyes make more money than we do. We, those of us who are here, we are doing it because we love the work. I have a wife and three daughters. Everything I have that I own is in this city. So if I get hit by a bus tomorrow, my children's future is dependent upon what happens in the city of Highland Park. Okay? It's depending. Now, I could have lived anywhere, but I chose to live here. Because when my mother was in nursing school, I came to Highland Park and I saw all of these people living a life of quality and respect. And I could walk away from that college and just roam around Highland Park and nothing happened to me. Nobody snatched me off the street as a little boy. This community was something. So when I, when I, after I got married, I came here and I found a house that I wanted to buy, which was behind the house I should have grew up in. I'm supposed to be here. I might have made other plans, but I'm here. We get the monthly financial statement every single month. And those of you who have been here have watched three out of five of us vote not to receive it. Not to receive it. Now, you can go to your chemotherapist all you want to and say, Mr. Thomas, I have your results. I don't want to see them. Mr. Thomas, this is your third visit. I want to show you your results. I don't want to see them. When you're in the ER and you have terminal cancer and they say, why didn't you? And your doctor says, here's a file folder full of all of your tests. And we told you to look at this. And you said no. You can't raise hell with your doctor then. You can't get people all hooped up and lying about it. That's what's going on here. Theater. I found out as a young boy from my grandmama that the truth is quiet and dignified. But a lie is loud as hell and it needs all the help it could get to be seen. Okay? I got on bifocals, trifocals. I know y'all see what I see. Okay? So this game that we talking about with the water rates, ladies and gentlemen, I sat in on the mediation process. I'm a certified civil mediator. I got a master's degree in mediation. That don't mean nothing other than I didn't drop out. I got to the end. One thing I can tell you, the mediation process is private because it is like slinging mud. None of what happened behind the doors will come out. What did come out is the fact that we got an agreement with the Great Lakes Water Authority. All right? David versus Godzilla. Godzilla. It is such a destroy you. Okay? The issue was we never had meter sewage or water. We never had meter sewage or water, ever. These water increases were to offset the cost in the process of us getting meters in the ground. Now, if 30 days after these meters go come out, go in the ground or wherever they need to go, we find out that what we've been paying is up here. What we've been using is down here, where somebody got some splaining to do, Lucy, right? Okay? So this is part of the process. This is a little bit of pain that's a part of that process. And don't you believe our city administrator, who has been cussed out, dogged, picked on, called incompetent? I have never in my professional career seen anybody fight like that or have that mental recall. In the time that I was with her, all those hours, she never touched a piece of paper. She's been living this. She's been living this. She did not go through all of this to sell us out. I watched her stand in a room and bang on a table and say, you're not putting those little old ladies outside with their china. And she just short of saying, get the F out of my face until you can come back with something that's acceptable for them. So nobody's going to play games. Nobody's going to play games. The legal situation is not perfect. We would have never agreed to something I was going to sell you up the river. So don't let people confuse you. Don't let them play these games. I said I wasn't going to be nice. These people are not going to continue to hold this city hostage. We are this close to losing this city. I don't know what makes you think they can get together and mackinon and decide they're going to put $2 billion into a building on the river and not decide equally, we've had enough out of Highland Park. It's only 8,900 people. Come on, let's just dissolve that charter. Center line is completely surrounded by Warren. I'm trying to go be fine. You don't have any idea how tough it is to live in the city of Detroit because you lived in Highland Park all these years. You can't get a permit. What you see happening in this city with the things that we do, the machine is completely different. Wouldn't be no, well, the process of making the village that we have over here on Avalon, they will be grinding it up like metal. Mr. Petty and his Juneteenth parade grinded up like metal. We have an opportunity. This is one of the last majority black, majority led by black cities. This is still a rainbow city. There aren't anymore. And there's a reason that this city is so valuable. It's because it is in the heart of the city of Detroit. Up on a hill, up on a hill. This used to be a part of Greenfield Township. I've seen the platinum. And ladies and gentlemen, if you don't feel these roles again next week and the week after that, and the week after that, these people will be allowed to raise hell without an audience. They'd be allowed to raise hell without an audience. I did say 90% of what I wanted to say because my mama watching. And she did ask about those blinds. And I'm with you. My parents sat in that front row during my swearing in ceremony. And the first thing my stepmother did, she didn't say, I'm so proud of you or hide your eye. She said, when are you going to change those blinds? So I think we ought to do something about that. Happy to conclude at all business related to the city of Highland Park.